Call to order, meeting on environmental affairs, health, environmental affairs. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input, item one?
Call through.
Oh, call through.
Counselor Peckham?
Yeah.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah.
And Chairman Lee?
Here.
Okay. We do have one submission for citizens input.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs. I am writing in regards to today's Health and Environmental Affairs meeting. I am sorry I could not be there in person as I had to work. I wish to state that we are in the middle of a pandemic. I believe it is crucial and essential that our water and sewer infrastructure is protected. The last thing we need in the middle of this pandemic is for our sewer lines to break or our city residents to have use, to have used dirty or contaminated water. It would have also been devastating for the over forty water and sewer employees who would have been laid off during this pandemic, unable to provide for their families. I would personally like to thank Counselor Peckham and Counselor Pelletier for voting against the layoffs of our essential city workers as Governor Baker deemed them essential during the earlier weeks of the pandemic. As for Counselor Lee, he said during Tuesday's meeting, and I quote, "It's always going to be compelling to raise, it's always going to be compelling story to raise." If the water and sewer rates were not approved, I would personally invite every counselor who voted for the layoffs to personally tell every single employee who would have been laid off by, laid off why their jobs and providing for their families was not compelling enough for said counselor. I do agree that we should give tax fee breaks to the residents of our community and the taxpayers without compromising the critical infrastructure of our community. That is why there should have been these discussions on how we can decrease water sewer rates before this budget cycle and not punt the issue down the road and then complain about the rates when it's too late. However, let's be honest with ourselves, there is no magic spell that in the short term will accomplish lowering the rates and fees without harmful budget cuts to our community, except one way. I propose that the city reintroduce the Pay as You Throw program as former Mayor Will Flanagan has done. Will Flanagan did a great job for our community. We will see a higher rate of recycling and less trash into our streamline. The issues with the last Pay as You Throw program weren't substantial, however, the city would like to fix them, such as a better quality bag, discounts for those in need, et cetera. In return, the city can work towards lowering rates and fees. Simply voting a lower rate in fees without a plan in place is not protecting the taxpayer. It is fiscal mismanagement. Sincerely, Colin Dais.
All right, so we'll move on to item two. Motion to approve the minutes for July 22nd, 2019.
Motion made.
Second.
So, call on favor? Call on favor? Okay, roll call?
Counselor Peckham?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes. And, um...
If I may?
Yep.
Uh, who got invited that's not here, Todd?
Um, well, Counselor, uh, Counselor, um, Pereira's here, but we're waiting for Mr. Perry for, uh, for one of the items, uh, which is actually the last item, so.
Did he get notified 5:30?
He said he'd be here.
Oh, he said he'd be here?
Yeah, he'd be here.
Okay.
Counselor Lee's in the building.
Oh, all right. Okay. My wife's making supper.
Uh, for, um, for item three, communication from city resident regarding sewage treatment plant odors, motion to lift from the table. This was tabled on October 23rd, 2017.
Motion's taken off the table.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, um, regarding, regarding this, uh, we, we did have, this did come to sort of a resolution, um, but it's not really a problem now, so we, we were just going to have a motion to, uh, leave to withdraw. So, is there a motion?
Motion leave to withdraw.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, uh, for item four, the resolution for, that was tabled on April 2nd, 2019, proposed digital bill, billboards, uh, motion lift from the table?
Motion made.
Second.
Um, we're gonna have Ms. Sahadi come down to the table for this one. Is there, uh, gonna be discussion on this?
I don't know where we're going. I mean, did you put them up or not?
Well, so, the information that, that, um, I received when, when I was looking at this item was that, uh, there were some concerns, safety concerns regarding, uh, it being a distraction, um, digital billboards being a distraction, being a hazard for drivers, whether it be on the highway or wherever they were proposing to keep these. Um, however, kind of, it just got tabled and it really, there was really no resolution to that, correct?
Correct, Counselor. So, I tried to do some research, I was not involved in the billboard initially, um, it was the previous city administrator that was involved. Um, I did find that Mastodot has approved one billboard and we are paying a license on that particular billboard. It is the one that was going to be erected at the corner of Market Street and South Main. All of the other billboards that were presented, there were twelve in the application that I could see somewhere front and back, so facing both sides, so not technically twelve. The majority of them, um, as, as Counselor Lee just pointed out, were denied, either because too close to, um, water or obstruction of view. So, we do only have the one, we are paying a license fee on it. I don't know what that fee is, I wasn't able to, to find that, but there is one that's still hanging out there that was approved by Mastodot. Um, at this particular point, this administration is, does not have any interest in erecting, um, a billboard at the corner of Market and South Main, um, and since that was the only one that had been approved initially, um, I would assume that this is somewhat of a mute, um...
Move, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
Mood interest, I mean, I don't, I don't see that we're gonna go forward with it, but...
So, this question was also brought up, uh, in other council meetings, and I believe there was a resolution to speak on these things as well, so you're probably gonna have to relay this information again, I assume, at that point in time.
Certainly, certainly.
But other than that, motion to leave through the draw?
Is it...
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion, continue.
All right, so, you got the license to put it up?
We did. Now, I don't, if you, if you remember correctly, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Counselor Pelletier, but if you remember correctly, that was only stage one, and then the administration would have had to have come back to you with the design of the billboard itself as well as the lease agreement, because the billboard process, the RFP that went out, included two components from what I could see from all the stuff in the file.
Yeah.
Um, it included the cash flow, so there was gonna be a percentage of the sale of the advertisement as well as a rental for the erection of the unit on city property. So, it looks like from what I could gather from, what I could find in the files was the rental was going to be about seventy-six thousand dollars for this particular location, and the cash flow, if you will, um, was slightly over a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm assumedly that was based on whether or not they had the sales for the advertisement, so that was, I'm assuming, just projections based on, on the company's knowledge of billboards and advertising.
Hundred thousand for a hundred and one, twenty years?
Well, I'm assuming that it would be annual, from what I would, well, I'm just, I, I wasn't involved, but I'm assuming, the rental would certainly be annual, so the rental of the leased land would be annual. I'm assuming when they refer to it as cash flow and a percentage of the advertising sales, that would also be annual because I'm, assumedly the, the advertising companies, the companies that are advertising, would be paying an annual fee to, to have their display of their business.
So, there's no interest from the administration at all?
There is not. I spoke with the mayor and he's not interested in, um, erecting a billboard on that site, and that was the only site that was approved.
Yeah. Is there a motion on floor to give leave to withdraw?
Uh, does Counselor Peckham have anything to say?
You said that, uh, the other billboards were not approved due to environmental reasons and...
I'm gonna assume envi- environmental, it appeared that some of them were too close to the water, so I'm guessing those were the ones that were going to be up twenty-four.
Yeah.
So, they were on Water Department land, I mean, again, I wasn't involved in any of this, so I tried to go through the files and see if I could get as much information as possible for you this evening.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was one near the Sam's Club where, um, Brayton Avenue and Twenty-Four Me, I'm not sure how that was too close to the water, but that seemed to be the same explanation for that one. Um, that one's also very close to residential, so maybe it was a combination that it was denied, but again, I mean, if this committee wants me to go further and, and do some additional research and, and try to...
So, I mean, you still have the floor.
I, I think it would be, and especially in the time that we're in now, money-wise, I think it would be worth entertaining just at least maybe looking, doing a little more research into it.
I, I wanna make a point, though, that we already have a resolution at another committee to talk about the financial part of this. This is the, um, this is the Health and Environmental Affairs, so I think the environmental affairs piece to this is probably appropriate to leave to withdraw and continue the financial part of this conversation at the appropriate subcommittee.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Agreed.
So, leave to withdraw?
Leave to withdraw.
Motion made, second?
Motion made?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, um, we're gonna move on to...
He did come.
Yeah, he's here, he's, he's right back over there. Uh, but we're gonna move first to, um, Counsel Pereira, if she wants to come down for, uh, for the, uh, fifth item on the agenda. And I did print out something for the situation here, but, um, this was, this was a proposal by, um, this was a resolution that was passed and, uh, by Counsel Pereira, so if she wants to...
Representative Stan Diabro?
Yeah, it would be best, just for the, for the distancing.
Wherever, I don't wanna have any open meeting violations, I'm sure Mr. Dais will send us another letter.
Well, you have, you have, I mean, I mean, there's, there's no problems.
Keep your president as a resident. It's okay, I'm fine here. The resolution that I filed with this committee, um, was because we talk about trash all over the city, we have people that go around and try to clean up, and I found that when we had the bags, lots of people, um, in speaking to owners at some of the drive-throughs, people were throwing their household trash into the, um, canisters, the ba, the barrels that they have, and so they remove them all.
Mm-hmm.
So now, I mean, I'm a coffee drinker, so I drive around to like every Dunkin' Donuts in the city, and if I have a cup in my car, there's nowhere for me to throw it out, so I just keep it there till I get home and can throw it out, but I see so many people just throwing wrappers from these drive-throughs. I just think that they should be mandated to have, um, a barrel, a bin, near their drive-through so that if somebody has something in their car from, that they can toss that and get another fresh cup of coffee or what have you. There's just so many wrappers and, um, so I would hope that from here it would go to the ordinance committee for an ordinance. I mean, we work well with businesses and we've tried to lower tax rates on certain times for businesses, and I think that, you know, a business certainly doesn't want all this trash around their yards either. Um, I just think it would make the city look cleaner.
Um, so, um, I'll open for discussion. Counselor Peckham?
Um, I do find it convenient, I know Burger King, on lower president, has a barrel that you don't even have to get out of the car. It's, it sticks out enough, you roll down your window, you throw your trash in there and you take off. Um, I, I would suggest that it go to ordinance and be entertained.
Counselor Pelletier?
I, I would, I think it's a very good idea. I would also try to include any storefront that sells milk and bread, and they got a parking lot for five, six cars, should have a bin as well. They come out with a lot of your tickets and everything on, on the ground if they don't hit. Uh, some of the gas stations got them, which is a good idea as well.
Mm-hmm.
Or I can get rid of my junk while I'm gassing up, but, you know, if a guy's got parking five, six cars, got a variety store, should have a bin outside. It should be included in there as well.
I, I wanna point out, um, do you, do you give the floor?
Yeah.
So, I wanna, I wanna point out that we have sixty-two dash forty-three, uh, in the ordinances where, A, garbage and rubbish shall be separated and wrapped in separate containers, and then B, commercial and business establishments shall segregate their garbage in watertight containers made of material and equipment with suitable handles and tight-fitting covers. So, we have something in, in, in place already, uh, for commercial businesses to, to make sure that they have, uh, containers. So, if they, if they've taken them off their properties, then they could be in violation of, of ordinance already.
I, I'm not sure if that refers to that business throwing out their own personal trash.
Okay.
I think it's more for their personal trash, but I, you know, I could see if the committee...
We can maybe expand on to something like this, though.
Mm-hmm.
We could possibly expand on it in, in ordinance, so, so that way we can be, have more clear language as to, you know, there, there needs to be something provided, so that we're avoiding all these littering ordinances that happen to print out as well, you know? So, we're, we're, we're doing what we can to, to keep the situation, um, under, under wraps. We, we also have, just besides drive-throughs, we also have parking lots of supermarkets like, you know, such as Walmart, such as Stop &amp; Shop, that, you know, at times it gets really bad out there in the parking lots as well with, uh, trash, so we do what we can to try to mitigate that, the best we can, so...
I, I certainly would entertain an amendment to that resolution by the committee to add, uh, Counselor Pelletier's, I think that's a great suggestion, that also all variety stores have a barrel outside, um, for people to be able to dispose. It'll, it'll help us with the trash.
So, so the motion could...
Thank you.
The motion could, oh, thank you. The motion could be to, um, to move, to move this to ordinance, just to move this discussion to ordinance and see if we can develop something, it doesn't necessarily have to be, um, you know, hitched to that specific ordinance, but maybe we can have something in this place, so, um, is there a motion to move to...
A motion referred to ordinance.
Motion made by Counselor Peckham?
Can we make an amendment now or not?
Making an amendment. And that amendment would be?
The amendment would be any store that's got parking for their customers to make sure that they have, uh, a place to throw their trash out as well.
To have a receptacle or something to that nature. All right. So, motion made with the ord, with the amendment? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, passed.
I'm sorry, who made the, the motion, the first, the amendment?
It's gonna, yeah, with the amendment, yep.
Counselor Pelletier, so...
So, just to clarify, the motion is, the amendment is for any establishment that has a parking lot to also include trash receptacles on their property?
Right, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Three twenty-three Peckham Street, that's where I live.
Oh, yeah.
And three times a week, Wendy's, these kids go out, get their food, and they gotta throw it in front of my house, so I'm wondering where you live.
You want me to stand in front of your house?
Somewhere else. Boy, does that burn me up, let me tell ya. I do.
All right, so, uh, we're ready to move on to the next item?
Do you wanna make a motion to refer it to ordinance?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, we, we did make the motion.
Make a motion to ordinance, right?
Yep, motion to move to ordinance with the amendment.
With the amendment.
As amended?
Yeah, we just, we just, we did vote on it just now.
Counselor Pelletier, was it the...
Yep.
And then Counselor Peckham?
Yep, and we were all in favor. I might have moved too fast on, I apologize. It's my first time here, I'm gonna make a couple of mistakes.
You're doing all right.
I'm doing all right. I already, I already, I'm gonna go home and see all the mistakes I made and listen to it on Facebook, of course, and go from there. Uh, Ms. Perry, if you wanna come down, I, I believe, do you mind going to that one just so we have the proper space?
Yeah, you want to sit at that table there, would that be better?
As long as you got the microphone, I'd, I'd like for you to at least have the microphone.
Counselor Lee, I can step back and he can sit...
You know what, that, that, that actually would be better, if you wanna switch with Ms. Sahadi, 'cause if you need to, if you need to add your two cents, you can just kinda jump into that, so...
Ms. Sahadi? Counselors, how are you?
Thank you for your time, I know you're busy.
Yeah, welcome, you're doing well, as, also Counselor...
Oh, wow.
I feel stressed, you're doing okay, yeah?
Sure.
Counselor Pelletier, I do know where Wendy's is, I'm not sure where Wendy's is.
Uh, you know me, I mess it up. Wendy was that one with the two, the ponytail? Is that the right one?
New establishments.
Is that Wendy's or Wendy's?
That is correct, it's Wendy's.
So, this, this, this item on the agenda is a resolution, um, that was passed and referred on February 25th, 2020, to discuss strategies to decrease solid waste and recycling costs. It's one of the, uh, first ones of the year that we were able to get to this, uh, subcommittee, and we've had multiple conversations about this in other subcommittees and other meetings. Um, so, all that being said, I, I did go through, um, some state laws just to kinda establish the foundation of the conversation, and we're doing a lot of what was already stated in the, in this, in some of these state laws. Any recycling program established pursuant in this section may require that all residents, schools, businesses in a town or city separate this solid waste, um, from recyclables designated in that legislative body. Um, and, and also, and, and this one has the addition, this, this part of the paragraph has, had as an addition to it for a transfer station. Um, I know that we, there was a vote for a transfer station, or at least to inquire about a transfer station, um, seventy-five percent?
Seventy percent.
About seventy percent of the people, uh, said yes to that, so, um, this is something that has also been, uh, discussed in capital projects and, and such, and we, we've got like the five-year plan where that we did see, uh, a, um, a transfer station on, on that, so that is gonna be part of the discussion, and, um, if you, if you may, do you, could you explain how you feel that would be, um, an asset to reduce, um, solid waste and recycling costs?
Sure, so, I mean, I've spoken about this many times at multiple meetings, um, so with the transfer station, as you said, it went on a referendum ballot, overwhelmingly approved, seventy percent of the ballot, said they'd like to see a transfer station established in the city. Uh, it's been several years since that.
Right.
Um, but, when you, when you talk about a transfer station, and my opinion's always been the same, so the intent of that transfer station in the beginning would be for us to get a handle on our own waste stream, be able to process our own recycling, our own trash, um, as opposed to hauling it to a transfer station, then going to an end-user facility such as Covanta. Uh, if we can do that in-house, then that's gonna drop our cost significantly right off the top, um, because you pay for a, a transfer station tip fee, and then there's a handling fee, so that gets dumped at the transfer station, loaded into another truck and taken to a different facility. Those two processes account for your overall, um, tip fee at, at a transfer station, so if we didn't have to go to that, that extreme and we could do it in-house, that would immediately drop our costs.
Okay.
Um, you know, to, to be self-sufficient i- is the intent, uh, and then once we're self-sufficient, um, then I think we could branch out and look at, as we've talked about before, regionalizing, bringing in other communities, um, you know, accepting their waste at a fee to those communities that would be much less than what they're paying at other outside vendors, uh, and that could be a revenue generator. Uh, but the intent would be to get a handle on our own trash situation first, um, and, and then branch out from there. Now, one thing on that transfer station, I would say is this would be a situation where we would need to contract out, so similar to what, um, the wastewater department does with V.O. Uh, they contract out, it's privately run, the employees are city employees, but it's privately run by a company that has expertise in that type of field, and we would need the same for a transfer station. Um, under no delusions that we have either the manpower or the internal, um, experience to, to, to effectively and efficiently run a transfer station, so that's one piece that people would need to understand.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be run by us, it would be run by somebody who has a history in running transfer stations and operating.
And just, just to your point, going through all these state laws, there was actually a provision in here where it states, establish a framework which encourages and permits private enterprise to participate appropriately in the development and operation of solid waste facilities, so...
Correct.
Just simply by doing, you know, going through that process, we're actually falling in line with some of the state laws that are gonna come down the line.
Agreed.
And I also, we also had a, a very good discussion, um, last week at the ordinance committee about composting. We were able to finally have some conversation about that.
Sure.
Um, I did, I, I do wanna reiterate some of the questions that you may have answered at that meeting just for this, for this, um, record, um, and I, and I, and I wanna also open up the conversation, obviously, to, uh, to the council, so just, just these three questions and then opening up the conversation. Um, where will the compost go? Will we have an opportunity to reuse the compost at all in any capacity? And, um, is there a cost in the pickup and hauling of, of the compost?
So, as far as the compost program would be constituted, it would be a home compost program, so a resident would purchase the bin through the city and compost at their own residence, so those, that compost is intended for them to be able to recycle that for their gardens, um, for, you know, uh, whatever they would need in, in their own home. Wouldn't be a situation necessarily where we would be picking that up, and if we were, I would imagine the residents would take whatever ends up composted and it would end up in their recycling bin at some point, um, but it would take it out of our waste stream, so whereas some people take, uh, compostable items such as food, waste and things like that, and they will throw it in the trash, or they'll throw it in the recycling.
Mm-hmm.
It'll take it out of those two waste streams that will reduce whatever amount of tonnage or pounds, I'm not sure how quickly we'll get to a, a significant amount of tons, um, we wanna see how the program takes off. We, we had a compost program, I'd say, close to ten to fifteen years ago that we, we undertook, uh, same exact bins that we're looking at doing now, um, it took quite some time for us to unload those compost bins, so the interest in it back then wasn't quite as, as, as high as I think it will be now, um, only for the simple reason that people have educated themselves over the last ten to fifteen years on recycling and the value of it. Um, back then, we, we still had, you know, the small blue bins, and the city was probably, I'd say, sixty percent covered with recycling, whereas now anybody who has city pickup is provided a recycling bin. Um, you know, at one point, I believe when I started, we may have been at five percent recycling across the city, you barely saw any recycling, so we've made tremendous strides in twenty years. Um, we're a hundred percent recycling provider for our residents. If they have trash collected with the city, they have an opportunity to be able to have their recycling collected as well.
But that process started small, too, right? We had the little small, little small square...
Right, and that would be when we were about five percent, so...
Yeah.
So, we started recycling at a certain point and we provided the small blue bins.
Right, and then there was, there was a grant involved in that.
Correct, and then that is slowly expanded, and we were probably about fifty, sixty percent covered with the city, maybe a little more, maybe sixty-five percent when we went to the carts in two thousand and nine. Uh, once we get the carts, that, then the, the little bins became outsourced, they were gone, uh, and we went straight to the bins, which were provided to each and every resident that had city pickup, so at that point, I'd say it's a hundred percent. Do a hundred percent of the people recycle? No, um, but most of them do.
And recycle them properly is a...
That is a whole nother story.
Now, that's another thing that could bring down, uh, costs, well, right now, we're in a, we're locked into a contract at a hundred and thirty-three.
Correct. Correct, but, but you can't ever lose sight of the fact that, you know, contracts constantly run their course, uh, and if we can get a handle on our contamination...
Yes.
Um, we can then bottom at a better price with other facilities, uh, to try to get a cheaper price, and what we've been doing in the last five or six years, I'd say, is we have two contracts as we speak right now, one for recycle, one for trash.
Yep.
Uh, and both of them are three-year contracts, uh, I'm sorry, one-year contracts with two one-year extensions if we choose so.
And they stay locked into the same price?
Correct, so once, once that first year runs its course, if we're in a better position and we think we can get a better price somewhere else, we have the opportunity to be able to go that route, or we can renew the contract with the current company and, and stick with them if we feel that that's our best solution. Um, so, we're constantly working and trying to evolve to get ourselves to a point where we can better negotiate with companies to get ourselves better prices.
But was that one thirty-three based off of the fact that we have contaminated recycling[1703.28]
So, we're constantly working, trying to evolve to get ourselves to a point where we can better negotiate with companies to get ourselves better prices.
Was that one thirty-three based off of the fact that we have contaminated recycling already, or was that a factor into that price?
So, the, the biggest factor in that, that price was the market. Market crashed, and recycling shot through the roof. It was no longer a commodity that people wanted. In ten years, we've gone from getting anywhere upwards of sixty-five dollars a ton for our recycling, being paid that, generating that revenue, to paying a hundred and thirty-three. When we originally started with this company, we were at one oh eight. And then, as the market continued to tank, and our contamination rates continued to rise, the price went up. We've had three increases in that contract sense with that company. But again, as I've stated, and I think it's very important that people understand this, right now, we pay a flat rate. There is no contamination escalators in the current contract that we have with our hauler. They pick it up at Lewiston Street, they haul it to the end-user facility, and that's the end of it.
Connecticut, right?
Once they haul it from Lewiston Street, it's their responsibility, and the city doesn't have any blowback from the end-user facility as far as contamination. That's not ideal, that's not what I want. I want to be able to go to a facility and drop off our recycling, and have them say, this is good recycling, we like it. But in the current state that we're in, that's the best position we can be in, is a place where they're not going to hit us for contamination escalators.
Now, regarding recycling alone, fast-forwarding to the possibility of a transfer station, how does that dynamic change?
As far as?
Tipping, or any kind of fees, or any...
Well, what, what you can do when you have a transfer station, you can then start to begin to sort your recycling. So, in essence, you can, you can pull out the commodities. So, even though the market's still in the tank, there are things that are beginning to climb. So, cardboard at this point has a value, crushed glass at this point, because they're using it a lot more in road, road construction. That price has rise, has risen. So, at that point with a transfer station, and again, this is something that would have to be run through a private company, and the revenue would have to be able to cover these costs. Because if you're going to sort out commodities such as cardboard and glass, you have to have manpower to be able to do that. So, with a transfer station and the manpower to do it, you can sort those commodities and actually get your premium price. And then, anything that's not really valuable in the market at this point, then you, you, you transfer that out to an end-user facility, and they do what they do with it.
Okay. All right. So, is there any more questions? All right, Councilor Peltier?
Transfer station, run by the privates. Would set it up, the city would set it up?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a partnership between ourselves and whatever company. We put out an RFP, Counselor, on a request for proposal. Actually, we'd probably do an RFQ first, that'd be a request for qualifications. So, you'd have several companies that would submit proposals, they'd give us their history, their experience on stations that they've run elsewhere, or they still currently run. And then, you'd have a committee that would choose one of those companies. And then, the RFP would go out and say, you know, that'd be the question, request for proposals. Once you decide what you want to do, you send that out, and then they come back with their proposal and costs to get the station up and running.
All right, you say a partnership.
Excuse me.
You say the partnership?
Yes, sir.
Is it one side on the money, or two sides on the money?
Well, no, it'd be a contract. So, it'd be a partnership to set it up. So, we'd look at them for their expertise in possibly helping to...
I'm worried about the money.
No, what it would be, would be a contract for a year. So, there'd be an RFP for the contract itself to run the station. The revenues that are generated would pay for that contract to operate the station, the transfer station, and everything else would come our way. So, similar, again, I, I'll compare it to the Enterprise Fund with the wastewater. Wastewater pays Viola per contract every year, that contract fee is its contract fee. Anything that they make as far as revenue above that contract fee stays in, in their, their pot.
What do you think, the initial cost to set it up?
So, when we originally did, when we did the referendum, I think the price was fifteen to seventeen million dollars. That would be for, you know, remediation of the site, the Lewiston Street site. And again, that's another thing that's up for debate. Some people feel it should be elsewhere, some people feel, including myself, that we could retrofit that site to accommodate a, the transfer station. I understand the argument against it, but to be honest with you, if we were to knock down the old incinerator building itself and set up the transfer building in the back of the property closer to the highway, our buffer between those residents that were recently built and, and the transfer station itself would be met. We would be within compliance of that distance that you need. It's got to be at least a hundred and fifty feet from any dwelling.
That would be more than a hundred and fifty feet, right?
Yeah, more than a hundred, at least a hundred and fifty.
So, do you think the seventeen million covers the cost of knocking that building down?
I think now, at this point, Counselor, again, this was several years ago that that referendum went on, and, and similar to when the, the incinerator closed, I think now you're, you're looking at maybe twenty million, twenty, twenty to twenty-two million, I'd say, probably to get that transfer station up and running. And, and probably close to, I'd say, three or four years minimum, from start to finish, between DEP, you know, applications, EPA applications, knocking down of the old facility, remediation of the, the soil, and then building a new facility.
You feel that the city's in good shape to do this, about seventeen, twenty million?
You know, right now...
Just a yes or no?
I mean, it, it's that, that, that with where we are now, Counselor, taking into the pandemic, the budget wars that we have, I think we'll be better, in a better position to answer that question after Thursday night. Once we see where we're going with this budget, and, and what we can afford as far as debt service, Mrs. Sahadi will certainly tell you, that would be something we'd go out to bond for. And what would that bond rate be, and what would that debt service cost us? Now, you know, obviously, we'd have to do analysis to see what we could generate for revenue at a transfer station, or what the costs would, would be. And if that covers the cost of the debt service and the operation of the station, then I say yes. But that's a lot of footwork that still needs to be done.
I don't want to end up like the Durfee school, that they're going to kick in money, I think twenty years, whatever the case may be, for a transfer station. Now, how many people you feel that is needed to run that? And is that part of city workers on our payroll, or private, privates are paying for that? Or we're paying them, whatever the case may be?
Well, how the actual personnel piece works, I believe, again, same thing. So, the, the employees that work for the private vendor, the contractor that would run it, would be city employees, they would receive city benefits. But they would be paid out through the private contractor under their contract cost. So, they would, they, hey, their salary itself would come from the private vendor, paid out of that contract fee, and then they would actually receive city benefits. I believe that's how it works, Counselor.
So, you're saying that they're going to be working and getting paid by the contract?
That's how I believe it works. Maybe Mrs. Sahadi could answer that question better than I do, as far as when it comes to that, how Viola and the wastewater department works that, that fee.
How many people you think it takes to run it?
Say, if you want to do it right, Counsel, you're probably going to need somewhere around twenty people.
Oh, jeez, you've got to be kidding me. I mean, we're, we're hollering not about not hiring anybody and everything else, watching our pennies and watching this. Here we go. I'm going to put up a building for maybe twenty million, get a transfer station, hire twenty more people, and a lot of departments are not having enough people themselves. Some are running like City Hall, Quicks, you know, there's, there's not many. And I know DPW, you guys are down to nothing, even the water department's down to nothing. And you know what we went through just to get a twenty-three dollars a month to keep the water department going? And you're going to present this to the people of Fall River? You're going to be kidding me.
Well, no, I can understand. I absolutely understand where you're coming from with that, Counsel. But you also have to just take into account that revenue savings is, is equal to revenue. So, depending on what your cost savings are with the transfer station, and the revenue that you can possibly generate, that's when you start to look...
The big question mark is there, boom.
Correct.
But you never know. But you're telling the people, we'll put twenty more on, and spend twenty more million, so on and so forth, you know?
I'm at, I'm at a bit of a disadvantage in this conversation right now, Counsel, only for the simple fact that I, after it went on the referendum, it was never a serious consideration. It was never given any serious consideration. So, the research on the transfer station really hasn't been done to that extent yet. You know, if I was given the, the green light to say, go ahead, and let's realistically consider doing this, you know, we're, we're, we're seriously considering bonding for a transfer station, go out, do the research, give us a presentation, then I could give you some hard numbers.
You'd have to do a lot to convince me.
I understand.
That's for sure. But I, I'll listen. If it makes sense, okay. If it don't make sense...
Nope. I can't ask for anything more than that, Counselor. If people are willing to actually listen with an open mind and not a closed mind, then I can't ask for more than that.
You got, you got the people out there, seventy percent voted for the transfer station. But they know how in-depth it is, how much money it's going to cost, how many people, the money's we're going to pay out, and so on and so forth. I don't think they realize that. You know, like the CPA money, yeah, they voted for that, they're paying one point two, I think, up and above. And if they knew what it was, they're probably going to vote for it. Probably going to vote for it.
I don't, I don't say this cavalierly, but, you know, those old adages are out there for a reason, because they're usually true. And in this one, the one that applies is, you need to spend money to make money. Okay? So, so when you really look at something, a, a lot of the times, it's an investment. So, if we make this investment now, as you said, you know, we look at the Durfee project, Counselor Pereira has, has constantly talked about what we should have done in the industrial park, should have gotten rid of the airport, should have, should have never sold the landfill. I honestly believe if we were to seriously go down this road, look at it, vet it out, and invest in this transfer facility, I think in the long term, we'll be looking back saying, thank God we did it. If we had done it when the referendum vote took place, we'd be up and running already. And I think you would have already be seeing the, the benefits of it. Again, that, that's my opinion, based on my experience in the industry. I think it's something this region needs. Right now, we have the Republic transfer station, but that's not for public access, that's private industry and our municipality that goes there. This would be something that would serve our residents. This would be something that would allow our residents to be able to cut the cost on disposal, cover hopefully collection costs and all.
All right, I get, I get the picture. And I'm going to depend on Mary Sahadi give us the numbers, not tonight, whenever you get the ball going. But I think it's a long shot, you know, I'm not a gambler.
You're not?
You're not?
Not a gambler, Counselor? No? Okay. All right.
I gave it up for land. But anyway, I'm, I'm going to yield for now, and see what comes out of it.
Well, I, before, yeah, before we move, I would like to just give the Counselor and the committee a chance to have a conversation. If you, do you have anything you want to add to the conversation, sir?
The only question I have is, I wrote the numbers down. How long do you think it would take us to bring in revenue?
Again, revenue and savings, I think, go hand in hand. So, i- if you can realize the savings as far as disposal, immediately, you could look at that also as revenue, as something you don't have to supplement out of the general fund at that point. So, revenue and savings go hand in hand. You'd have to look at both and say, that's your total benefit from a transfer station. I think immediately, your, your benefit is the savings to the taxpayer as far as disposal, and long-term, your benefit is, is revenue. Until we get to a point where we're starting to bring in trash from other communities and/or private people that need to, to use a, a transfer station that they don't have access to currently, then you'll start seeing those revenue. But I think the savings is what immediately is going to make the difference.
Okay. So, to, to assist on, on further answering his question, you've provided us with how much things are costing now, and how much they're going to cost down the road if we don't do something about addressing the disposal fees and the tipping fees and things like that. So, if you do, you recall those figures that you brought, you brought to us in that, in that conversation? Because I think you said, like, right now, we're at somewhere around, you know, eight million or so, and it can end up being ten more within the next few years, based on the fact that we're not addressing it.
Yeah, again, I'm going to be careful in numbers I throw, I don't have those with me right now. But inevitably, your costs are going to continue to rise. So, for instance, our contract with Republic right now costs for ninety-seven dollars a ton. If we had not entered into the soil project that we're currently working with them on, next year's fee, come September actually, would have been one oh three. Because, you know, we're working jointly to, to get that soil project off the ground with them, we renegotiated year two and year three of that, that one year with two-year extension contracts, and we were able to lower that by three dollars a ton each year. So, you know, year two will be a hundred dollars and thirty cents, and year three will be one oh three, a hundred and three dollars and sixty cents, I believe it is. So, you know, we've already been able to see that decrease, but, I mean, we'd go from ninety-seven to one oh three come September, had we not entered into that project. That's a six-dollar a ton cost at seventeen to twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty, I'm sorry, seventeen hundred to twenty-two hundred ton a month. I mean, you multiply that obviously by twelve, and the numbers continue to skyrocket. So, it's, 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 it's significant money, and there's no end in sight. You know, what we are doing now are the small-scale initiatives. So, we're locked into that one-year contract with Republic, and with our recycle hauler for now, year two, year three are optional. So, what we're doing now is we're trying to find ways to remove any kind of waste that doesn't belong in your trash, the compost, textiles, clothes, shoes, things of that nature. We have that recycling textile bin at the DPW now, where people can drop it off. There are curbside collections of textile as well, but that would come with a cost. So, as it stands right now, we've allowed to drop off at DPW. There is a DEP program that you can use grant funds for to put another cart at the address. So, right now, we have green and blue carts. Let's say this one would be, I'm not going to say purple, let's say this one would be, you know...
Yellow.
Okay, it's a yellow textile cart, and that's all that's in that cart. That's an extra pickup, so it'd be something we'd have to negotiate. But it takes that weight out of our waste stream as far as tonnage, compost, textiles, books, things of that nature. And hand in hand with recycling goes to trash. So, if you're removing those things from the waste stream as far as solid waste, people also aren't putting them in their recycle bin if they have an ability to, to recycle it another way as well. So, we're working on those small-scale initiatives and the education piece. We, you see the A-frame, recycling education boards that we put out on the street. We continue to work with DEP to, to come up with ways to, to reduce our trash. Absent of the purple bags, the pay-as-you-throw program, I should say, it's interesting, because in my research, I, I came across a pamphlet, a pretty thick pamphlet about pay-as-you-throw, and it was, it was written in nineteen ninety-four. We instituted pay-as-you-throw in two thousand and fifteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
Fourteen. So, I mean, that's how far behind the times we were, you know? But, again, without that program, our, our tonnages per month have gone up five to seven hundred tonne. We were averaging fourteen hundred tonne a month with the bag program, we are now averaging seventeen to twenty-two hundred.
You gave us that, uh, kind of...
Correct. So, I mean, that is your surefire simplest way to reduce your tonnage and your cost. But obviously, we know that comes with a whole nother debate that we've already had, and I don't think anybody's interested in having right now, but it's something to think about.
Uh, Counselor Per?
Yeah, but, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to make it clear that I'm not here as a Counselor, I'm here as a resident in the Fall River. I appreciate what Mr. Perry said relative to transfer station, and I think when that was voted on years ago, you didn't have homes there, there weren't transfer stations around, and it might have made some sense. But right now, honestly, I don't think a transfer station makes any sense. I have children, and I have grandchildren, like some of us here have grandchildren. We need to figure out what we're going to do for our trash, not short-term, but long-term. So, I don't care how many transfer stations you build throughout Massachusetts, and you're transferring this to a landfill. Landfills are going to close up. You're not going to have landfills. There's two in Massachusetts that are on the verge of closing. What you need to do is look at gasification, a gasification plant that is ninety-nine point ninety percent pure going into the environment. And if you had a gasification plant here, then you could do that regionally, then you could have...
Counselor Per, you mean, you mean waste, waste to energy?
Waste to energy.
Okay.
With a gasification plant. But then, you would have surrounding towns coming here to do that, and then you'd be making money. So, our trash would be minimal, a minimal cost, because we're running it, we're operating it, and you can build one of those. I want to say, last figure I heard, was about twenty-five million. So, if you're going to be spending twenty million on a transfer station for another five million, where you're going to get money back, and other communities are going to be paying. Problem is, Massachusetts doesn't have that yet. So, we would have to petition the state and petition the governor to let us have a pilot program here. So that if we had a pilot program here, then that's the way to go. I think what Mr. Perry says is true, that the transfer station, when it was voted on, people were really looking at it, and looking at it as an option. But realistically, for our future generations, isn't that why we're trying to figure out how to do something with trash? I mean, we've thought about using the Totten River, because it's the deepest port, second to Boston, to put it on cargoes and, and get it out. We've thought about getting our trash, putting it on South Coast Rail wants to help us, and, you know, shipping that out to what, South Carolina, wherever.
I think that was Rob Melian.
There's, you know, there, there's a bunch of different ideas, but all you're talking about is putting, taking trash from here and putting it somewhere else. That somewhere else is going to wear out. There's not going to be a somewhere else to put it. So, if we want to be innovative, and we don't want to wait, like Mr. Perry said, when they voted on this, and when it came to fruition, and when they put out, you know, a whole thing on, on bags, and what, in, in, what did you say, Mr. Perry, nineteen, what, and we did it?
Ninety-four.
And Fall River didn't pick it up till two thousand and fourteen? Why are we always in the caboose of the train? Why don't we get into that car and drive it first? We have the innovation, we have smart people here, we have people with great ideas. We're afraid to move on them sometimes. But I think that's a way to go. Because when there is no more land, where are my grandchildren gonna put their trash? Where? That, and I know that there's a resolution to go to finance to talk about trash as well, but I think Mr. Perry does an excellent job on looking at how much he can get or what he can take out of it, et cetera. And, and we did get a lot more through this pandemic, because people that were cleaning their closets and stuff, you couldn't go to Savers and give it or put it anywhere. You couldn't go to St. Vincent's, usually where I go, couldn't go anywhere. So everybody was just throwing it out and it actually gave us additional tonnage. But even though with the pandemic, he's managed to keep costs down a bit, so I thank him for that.
Do you wanna respond to any of that?
Yeah, so if you go back and you look at, at historically, when Mr. Pacheco and myself actually did the presentation for the council all those years ago, we talked about that. And my, my position has always been the same. I appreciate you bringing that up, because one of the points I've made a couple of times on this floor was the intent would be to get a handle on your own trash waste stream first, build a transfer sorting facility that could always be retrofitted to do waste to energy.
So you wanna build, you wanna, you wanna, you want this to be sort of a, to build the infrastructure to do
To be able to get to that point. Because in order, you'll, you'll look in industry, if you look at the industry standard, you look at the industry research, you know, Councilor Perrin is right, you'd have to regionalize to be able to do a gasification plant or a waste to energy plant, regardless of what that weight, that energy is.
And there is one in Rochester, was it Rochester?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, but what, what you'd need to do though is you need to have enough tonnage to support that waste to energy. You, you, you need the, the tonnage. So in this sense, where we're talking about trying to reduce our tonnages, if we had a waste to energy facility, we would actually not wanna increase our tonnages in, in the city. We'd wanna bring in tonnages from other communities, okay? And, and at that point, then you can do waste to energy. It, it takes quite a bit. So we would need, obviously, our state delegates, our, our local council, our administrations locally to get together and, and form a coalition that is gonna say, okay, we're gonna join forces here and we're gonna do something that hasn't been done in this area. And I agree, it's something that we wanna do. One thing I would be curious on and I'd love to see would be where the twenty-five million dollar price tag came from, because in, in what I understand, a gasification plant will be much more significant than twenty-five million. I hope I'm wrong on that and I hope the number that, that, that you gave is correct, because that is definitely something that should be looked at if it's that price. I think a gasification plant might run a little bit more than that twenty-five million. But I agree, wholeheartedly, and I've said this, you can do the research and look, go back and find the film. The intent would be eventually to be able to branch out, regionalize and do waste to energy. When we came here to do our original presentation back then, it was ABC, Mr. Kimbora from ABC Disposal in Mubefi. And his plant was still, he's still having issues trying to get that plant up and running. And at that time, it was charcoal briquettes, just like you'd buy at the store. The plant was going to turn the waste into charcoal briquettes that they could then sell and make money on. Well, I said it at this very table, that's fine, that's great. Let's get a handle on our own waste stream first. And then, if you wanna make charcoal briquettes, you wanna gasify, you wanna make some other sort of energy out of things later, then you can really look at that. We can't skip steps two, three, five and seven to get to the end. We have to follow along. Right now, we, we don't have a significant, as much as I hate the, the numbers for tonnages, we don't have enough tonnage in this city to be able to run a gasification plant. With the transfer station, agreed, it, it needs to be able to be retrofitted to that. But you look at ninety-seven dollars a ton, a hundred dollars a ton come September, that is the cost that will, will plummet if you have a transfer station. Because then instead of transferring it to them, you're transferring it out yourself. She's right, eventually, these other locations, landfills, plants are gonna close. But in that time, until that day, if we can drop our cost from a hundred dollars a ton to fifty dollars a ton, I think we'd be way ahead of the game. And, and look, again, we are in contracts. Us, our Republic contract runs up in September and our waste stream contract runs up again next July. And in that timeframe, I think it's definitely a worthwhile endeavor to reach out to other facilities. I know Councilor Pereira and, and, and a gentleman that she's very close to and I have talked. Let's, let's get out there and see what we can get from other facilities. Understanding that where we bring it may affect our collection contract. There is a stipulation in there that EZ will go a specific number of miles outside the city limits to bring our trash where we say they need to bring it. Anything over that mileage, I believe it might be thirty, will, would, would be an added cost. But let's start looking at other facilities that may be able to give us a better price. Let's get out there. With the recycling, I don't think we can really do that until our contamination rates come down. And those contamination rates hopefully are gonna start to come down with this education piece that we're doing and with the, um, the recycling ideas that we've done as far as the textile, the compost, the books, those things. So that, that's where we're at right now.
There's a, there, I, I, as I, you know, as I'm running and talking about environmental concerns and everything, had some people reach out to me. There's a, there's a county in, in England called, I believe it's called Ashland that had a very similar setup to, to where we are, where they were having a lot of struggles with their littering problems, you know, all kinds of different things. And it, it used to be a destination for, for, for visitors from all around, you know, tourism and things like that. And they were having a lot of financial problems, very similar to what Fall River, you could say about Fall River. They, they put in a program that focused on the hierarchy here, which is, which is falling in line with what you're talking about here. So the hierarchy set by the, by the EPA in this article talks about how the number one most preferred way of, of a municipality to handle its situation is to reduce and reuse, get into the reduction and the reusing part. So that goes a little different, that goes into a different area of, of specifically gasification. Although I would argue that there are a lot of waste to energy programs out there that you can still design for reduction rather than seeking a profit, which, again, once you do successfully reduce, you are gaining, in, in essence, a profit out of this. The second one is recycling composting. And then third, it's energy recovery, which would also qualify for like methane, catching methane gas off of, uh, off of landfills and things like that. But that's further down the hierarchy. And I'll have a copy of all this later. And then the last one is treatment and disposal. So the very first thing that we have to focus on is the reduction and the reusing. So when you bring up pay-as-you-throw as a, as a, as a tonnage reduction mechanism, that, that's what it was, that's one of its successes, is that it was, it worked on increasing recycling and reducing of the, of the solid, solid waste. Unfortunately, we had, you know, contamination problems with our recycling. So there was a couple of things, there was a couple of things, obviously, that we needed to fix on that. Plus the, the financial, you know, side of it and, you know, the public and everything else. So we had a lot of problems there. But I would, I would say that right now, we're addressing, we're trying to address one of these hierarchies with the composting program. So through my, through, through all this research, I, I found that, I found the town that actually did a lot of the things that we could do. And it was, and the money, I'm glad we had a chance to talk about all the money right now, because the money in this is, is significantly less and it could be something we could look into, especially if you do establish an infrastructure that where we can be in charge of our own waste stream. So, so the first thing that we talked about, or that they talked about here-
What town with this, please, council?
Um, I don't have the town on me in this, in this document, but I can, I can get that for a, a different time. It was in North Carolina, though, I know that. Dedicate staff resources for the development of public awareness. We talked about this, we talk about this all the time, about how we, we do some, but we don't do enough public awareness. I really think having an opportunity to work with our public schools would be great. Curbside, curbside pickup for composting, right? There's only one city that does that and that's Cambridge. All the other places that do, that, that provide composting are pretty much doing what we're trying to establish, some home composting, try to reduce solid waste. However, Cambridge does a tremendous job. And, and again, they had plenty of, of startup money to do it. But they do a tremendous job of incorporating their school website and, and also their regular municipal website into the advertising piece of composting and, and recycling properly and all that. Those, those efforts have helped them reduce their, their costs and their recycling and their solid waste altogether. So that's one thing that we could do on this, on this recommendation sheet. Then also dedicate resources to public awareness and education for curbside pickup and, and, and the proper recycling. But also, and again, we talked about this last week, adopt and enforce strict penalties for customers that violate the recycling policy. So we're starting to try to put teeth to that. I think we're in the process of trying to put teeth to that. I really think that if you are successful in this piece, then you're also going to be successful in the reduction of contaminated recycling. And then that's going to end up being a benefit to property owners that probably, and initially, will not be happy, you know, with some of the things that are gonna be implemented. But I would argue too, that since you don't have the purple bags anymore, that need for, for penalizing, it won't be as high as it was before, I don't think. I think we had a lot more people, what, eight percent to ten percent of the population weren't using bags at one point in time?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think there obviously were, were people who weren't, who never followed the program from day one. There were plenty of good people, more good people, tens of thousands of more good people than not, that did the program, never, never, you never heard from them. They bought their bags, they put out their trash and that was the end of it. But there were a lot of people that didn't. So, but I will say, if you don't mind, a couple of points on that. So dedicating resources as far as funding, we do partake in the recycling dividends program through the EP, which we garner points for. And those points, each point is worth a specific amount of money and we get that every year. I've, I've stockpiled a significant amount, which is what we're using for the compost bins, what we're using for the A-frame boards that we're putting out for cycling education. So as far as that kind of resource, we do have some funds that we can spend to put that stuff out there. The staff would be an issue. So as I said the other night, right now, I have three compliance officers. I have four positions, I only have three. As Councilor Pelletier said, you know, DPW's already stretched thin. The manpower in my compliance division are teamsters, they are DPW employees. That number's at forty. So you take those three men, four if I had my max, out of that forty, that takes away from the other things we do. So dedicating staff to it would be a little bit more difficult. But resources, we can. The school piece, we actually did a couple of presentations last year. One of them was at Doran in the bottom of Columbia Street. Kids loved it. It was a, it was a competition, which class could recycle the most and do it right. And that class at the end of the year was awarded a pizza party. EZ Disposal worked hand in hand with us on that. They have a Robbie the Robot, they call it. He comes and answers recycling questions, the kids love it. And to Councilor Pereira's point, I can't agree more.
The future.
I've said it. I think getting into these schools and teaching these kids how to recycle responsibly is the most important thing we can do right now. To those, to the point with the purple, with the pay-as-you-throw, some people just aren't gonna follow it. Some people aren't gonna listen. Some people aren't ever gonna recycle the right way. But if we can get to the children now and teach them, I know when my kids were young, they're all older now, I wish I could turn the clock back, but can't. But they're older now. But when they were young, if I came home and, and, or they, they came home from school and they had witnessed this recycling program and, and had somebody teaching them how to do it, they would have pleased me. They would've said, Dad, you can't throw that out, Dad, you can't throw that. Hey, that's recyclable. And they would have pleased me. They're gonna be the responsible recycler, generators someday. And if we can get to them early and it's second nature to them, just like anything else, if it becomes second nature, you don't even realize it's taking any effort.
The large-scale, the large-scale recycling programs started in the nineties, along the same lines as when pay-as-you-throw was, was really first introduced in ninety-four. So we're still in infant stages of a lot of this. It's only been about twenty years or so.
Right. And, and again, to Councilor Pereira's point, we, we're usually, you know, bringing up the rear. We're, we're, you know, ten steps behind other communities in what we're doing. I think an important part, and I can't stress this enough, I said it at the council meeting last night, I have three of you, four, if you can come upon, so president as a resident today, Councilor Pereira as a resident today, we need the support of the administration and of the council. Because when we try to institute stringent guidelines, we need support and backup. So when the phone rings and somebody who isn't doing the right thing wants a break, wants to, us to overlook something because they might know the right person, we need the support of the council and the administration to be able to say, no, you need to do this right, because the cost is being spread to everybody within the community. And if we can't get those costs under control, then it's costing everybody more money.
It's gonna, and that's, I think that's the long-term thing, is that it's gonna, it's costing more to keep things the way it is right now. We have to figure out, you know, ways to, 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 to bring it down in a, in a, in a, using a team effort, really, to really go down it. I, I have this one last piece of this, of this list and I'm gonna, I'm gonna provide a copy of this list to, to this guy there. But I want to, I wanna introduce something that maybe, I don't think it's ever been introduced before to you on the floor. However, it was, it was utilized in this, in this town here. And also, in general, just something that makes sense, it makes logical sense. So this is anaerobic digestion of organic wastes. You've, you've seen that before. There's several different, there's several different waste to energy programs out there. This one is, focuses on reduction, which is the top, top thing that the EPA recognizes as a method of reducing costs for municipalities. The, at its most expensive, it would be three million. So that's, that's what the estimated cost would be. So that's different from twenty million of a, of a transfer station. And it's something that we probably possibly, as Council Pereira mentioned, could possibly get from, you know, in a pilot program if we put in the right grants and things like that, or grant requests and things like that. It's possible. I'm not saying it's probable, I'm saying it's possible. But, so in this, in this situation, and this is something that I've been reading on for years, there's an actual web, there's an actual website that has about, I was gonna print it out, but it was like almost thirty pages long, so I just didn't, you know, I didn't go there. But I can provide a link if someone needs that information. This is something that you now can look into other forms of organic materials such as sewage and things like that. But again, I do think you need the infrastructure in place. So if you do have something like the transfer station or something like it, something that can act as it, that may not be as expensive, but still act as it, that can provide the infrastructure. I know you don't wanna cut corners. But I, but I do think if we had something in place, something like this would be very valuable, especially if we're making, as a city, we're gonna make a push for composting. Cause now there's different, there's several different levels of composting. There's food, there's yard waste, but then now there's also or-organic materials that you can also do with this anaerobic digester. I've looked at prices, I haven't seen it go far, for, I haven't seen it anywhere near three million, but I've seen them go up pretty high, under three million or so. Again, if we're dedicated to the possibility, if we're dedicated to it, this could be something that would help us significantly reduce waste and costs. And it's already, and it's already proven to help other towns and cities who have invested in it. So I think that we're not, I told you before offline, probably even years ago, that I'm a little bit of a radical thinker when it comes to certain things like this. I don't think this is, this is radical too much. It's, it's certainly not too expensive. And it's something we could possibly do. Every single program, no matter who it is that comes down the line, there's gonna be some pitfalls to it. I recognize that. However, what, what we're trying to accomplish with reducing and reducing waste and, and getting into composting and things like that, and hopefully pushing it on a high scale, this might be a valuable tool in the process.
Yeah, no, I agree. We, we have looked at anaerobic digesters in the past. Again, that cost that you stated, you know, and I wanna make sure that the, the public knows. I don't say what I say about finances, whether it be bags or fee or any of that lightly. I understand, time's a tough, time's tight. You're, you're talking about a guy who started with the city, you know, throwing trash in the back of a truck for nine seventy-five an hour. I know what it's like to struggle, so I can completely understand that. I didn't always wear a tie. So at the end of the day, I do say what I say with the understanding that, you know, Fall River has a low median income and, and people do struggle. And I also say it, I also do say it with, with the knowledge that, you know, I've been here now going on twenty-one years and I lived through some very tough financial issues. So in two thousand and nine, when we had the nine C cuts from the state where they cut our local A, the DPW was hit significantly, thirty layoffs. You know, that was a financial crisis and we're talking eleven years ago. Okay, so it took us quite some time to pull out of that, four, five years before things started to look a little better. So now you're looking, it's two thousand and fourteen, okay? Two thousand and fourteen, we were sitting in this very room discussing pay-as-you-throw because our costs for disposal and supplementing, well, at that point was an enterprise fund with general fund monies. Again, money was an issue. Even though we were five, six years from the two thousand and nine, uh, nine C cuts, we were still in financial hardship. So looking at all of these things, a lot of the times wasn't realistic for us to do what we wanted to do. Could we have gone out and, you know, bonded and gotten an anaerobic digester to try to do this? Yeah. Did Mr. Pacheco and myself look at these types of things? Yes. Was it very easy to get approval for funding, to Council Pelletier's point? How many times can we keep going back to the well for money? And then look back and say, well, that was five million dollars we spent and didn't actually come to fruition what we thought we were gonna get for it. You know, so it, it's always been a financial struggle. Until we make a leap and we really say, okay, we're, we're, we're gonna invest. Until we make a leap and we really say, okay, we're, we're, we're gonna invest. And I say that, we do that when we vetted it out completely, Council Pelletier, to your point. Let's not run into this. Let's, let's just not jump into the deep end. Let's, let's dip our toe in the pool. Let's figure out where we are. Let's get the people who have experience in this in the room, um, and start to walk through this process. Uh, I'm, 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 I'm very easily, I'm not the guy who's gonna sit here and say, I know it all. I'm gonna need somebody who has a history in this type of situation to, to help, you know, guide us through this. But let's do the research, let's vet it out, let's see what the costs are, let's see what the benefits are. Let's lay it all out on the table and, and see if the benefits long-term, as Council Pereira said, are gonna benefit us, which I think they will. And what's the short-term struggle that we'll have to go through? Things are gonna be tight. Uh, it's gonna be, you know, uh, another bond that we're gonna look at and say, we're gonna have to pay this for twenty years. I'm sure it would be a long-term, not a short-term bond. This is something we'd be paying for many years. But if we can say after twenty-five years it's paid, uh, and, and we're self-sufficient, not only are we self-sufficient, we're making revenue, uh, that we can, you know, work with the city to possibly supplement some of the other general fund, um, issues that we have. If we can bring in that kind of revenue someday. And again, not just revenue from our residents, residents, right? So it's not a money grab. Uh, it's a way to reduce our costs so our residents don't have to pay. And then eventually outside communities wanna get on that board, on that bandwagon and they wanna be able to cut their costs, we'll make revenue from them. Um, and, and that's where I think we need to start really looking. If we continue to do the same thing we've always done, we're gonna continue to have some tough decisions to make on this table.
Council Pere, uh, Pelletier, sorry.
Well, I think, you know, we've come a long way tonight, uh, and everything takes time and, you know, I'd like to see this thing stay in committee. And I'd like for you and Mr. Perry to look into gasification. And whatever title you put in on yours, what was the title?
It's called anaerobic digestion.
Which I never heard of anything like that.
Yep.
And you come back and, and, and give us, uh, uh, some kind of response. Is it a good idea, gasification, or the other way to do it? And give us a few options. And I just think at this point to hire twenty more people and spend twenty million. I'm not saying take a shortcut, but maybe there's a better way, better way for the people of Fall River. And, you know, uh, get some help, help you out, to find out what's the best way to go and come back and see us.
I'd be glad to.
Before you make a motion to a table, I think.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion leaving the committee.
Before, but before we do that, I believe, um.
Yeah, just one thing, uh, to go back to the educational piece. I remember years ago when the, we really started attacking recycling in the city. There was a, a mailer that went out. And my daughter's mom actually put it above the recycling bin in the kitchen. And my daughter knows because of that, what to recycle and what she can't recycle. Would it be feasible to do that again? A mailer to?
Yeah, we did a mailer with the last, um, round of tax bills. So every tax bill that went out, we put a recycle flyer in that, um, in Spanish and in English.
Perfect.
So that went out. And right now we're in the process of making another mailer, which would just be a postcard-sized mailer. Uh, that will go citywide. And it will go to current resident. Whereas the tax bills get billed to the owner's property. So if the owner isn't in the city, it doesn't get sent to that property. Even if they're an owner occupied, it's gonna go to the first floor wherever the owner lives and the other tenants aren't gonna get it unless it's.
I think that's a great idea.
Right. So it's gonna go to current resident. So every residence in the city is going to get that mailer. And it's gonna explain it in, in English and in, um, and in Spanish.
It has the, uh, the clothing aspect.
It has everything that's allowable, um, to recycle. It has our biggest offenses as far as contamination, the plastic bags, the food waste, the yard waste, things of that nature, whatever those, those top contaminants are. It has those as a yuck section, that's called, with the, you know, the Ghostbusters circle with the line through it. And then it also has links to our website, which is now linked to DEP's Recycle Smart program, which they will answer any question. If anybody goes on RecycleSmart.org, uh, through the DEP, you can put in any question you have as far as recycling and it will answer that question in multiple languages. So it has those links, it has the do's, it has the don'ts. And it also has, um, what we're doing as far as the small-scale initiatives, as you said. It will list textiles, um, book drop-off, compost programs and the like. So it's, it's, I think it, it, people should be seeing that soon. Uh, we went to the printer for proof, showed them what we wanted. They're gonna put that proof together and then once it's approved by me, uh, we'll start getting it out in a mass mail.
Excellent, thank you.
I, I really, so I, I really, I really feel that people, and we, we've seen, we've seen this room filled from wall to wall when there's an increase in something, right? They need to, I think people really need to hear the numbers of how bad things are because of such things as contaminated recycling. I think they need to see that. They need to understand what tipping fees are and all these things. I think that, that kind of education has not been pushed out a lot, in my opinion. Not, not to the level that it needs to be for people, so it can become part of regular conversation. Oh man, if I put this in here, like long, you know, long-term, large scale, this is gonna cost, this is gonna cost me money. You know what I mean? I think they, I think people just need to hear that a lot frequently, whether it be on the radio and, and advertising and things like that. Reduce your costs, we're at a hundred and thirty-three recycling. Like I think if people understand that, you know, a hundred and thirty-three dollars per ton is an insane amount of money, you know, and, and it can be reduced, you know? That thing, that, that number can be brought down. And what, what, what is it right now for, uh, solid waste?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven? Again, an astronomical number right now. People, a lot of people don't know that. They don't know that. So they have, they just don't, they don't feel like they're invested in it. And, and the minute that, the minute that a fee comes down the line, a minute that the bags start met, get mentioned, you will have this room filled with people telling you no. So that same energy needs to be put into how, how all these people that would be angry would then be benefited by, by that.
The last piece to the education that we're really gonna do, um, we're doing all of those other things I mentioned. The last piece that we're gonna look to do is gonna be, uh, public, uh, public access TV spots. And, and they're gonna cover a wide range. So initially it'll be, you know, teaching somebody how to recycle. We'll take the contaminated recycling bin, empty it out, sort through it and explain to everybody what is recyclable and what isn't. It'll be your average everyday recycle bin that we see on the street. We won't over-contaminate it, we won't under-contaminate. We'll give you a, a clear view of what most bins on the curbside look like. Separate that and show you exactly how much trash we're really pulling out of that. But another one that I had thought about doing and, and we discussed was, to your point, let's, let's, let's put the facts out on the table. As I said, let's put it all out on the table so people understand exactly where we are.
I still have people that come up to me and tell me, we, we make money on our recycling. And I, I, I don't wanna laugh in their face.
I wish, I wish.
I don't wanna laugh in your face, but it's the, literally the complete opposite of that.
Yeah, again, I lived through the days where we were. I mean, it was great. It was sixty-five dollars a ton, we were getting it, it was coming in every month and it was coming in heavy. We, we, you know, we, we couldn't get enough recycling out there. It was great. But then China instituted the national sword. You say that and some people probably gonna think you're talking about a Saturday morning Kung Fu movie. But they instituted the national sword, which lowered the contamination, acceptable contamination rates in recycling to point zero one percent. Impossible, impossible. So basically what that did, they weren't allowed to shutter their doors and say, nobody can drop off recycling, we can't bring it into our country. But by lowering the rate to that, it effectively did the same thing. And then once that happened, the, the market just tanked. So what ended up happening is these end-user facilities continued to take recycling in such as ours. And, and instead of shipping it overseas like they do, um, they began to bail it and store it in warehouses. So right now, there are warehouses all over the country that are chock full of recycling. So the market rate for recycling isn't gonna come down until those commodities and those warehouses are shipped out. And then what's put out at the curbside by residents is then, um, a valuable thing to these end-user facilities, okay? It's, it's a supply and demand. Until they need more recycling that's coming from the curbside and they don't have warehouses full of it already bailed and cleaned and ready to go, our price isn't gonna go anywhere. Um, and that's gonna take some time. So until that happens, we need to continue to be vigilant to try to keep our costs down, keep our contamination rates down and do everything we can do. Um, and then another piece that just, I don't, you know, it's.
Mr. Chairman.
I know, Councilor, I know.
Do, do, do we have a motion on the floor?
We have a motion on the floor.
Can we vote on it?
Second?
I yield, Councilor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
We're in, we're good. Is there a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.